Unvaccinated are recommended to continue wearing masks. If there is a child under the age of 12 unmasked, you can assume they are unvaccinated as well. Is this going to lead down the path where my child will be discriminated against for not wearing a mask? I don't want any child to be treated different from others for their choice, because again, it is a choice. I also wanted to address the quarantining policies. Dr. Paul Alexander, who was a former COVID-19 advisor to the World Health Organization, stated the rate of survival among children 0 to 19 is 99.997%. I personally disagree with quarantining for exposure. Children should stay home from school if they are sick, just like if they had a stomach bug or the flu. Quarantining a child for exposure limits that child from educational opportunities, especially if you cannot offer synchronous learning for them. Not all families are able to educate their children the way a teacher is able to. I understand staffing makes that complicated, but don't quarantine them when it's not necessary. I would also like to address those that have recovered from the virus. Those antibodies, those with antibodies are just as protected, if not more protected, than those that are vaccinated. Are you going to take that into consideration? I wanted to take this time to address the concern regarding conversations that may be taking place in school. I think it's inappropriate for anyone to be educating my child on anything regarding the pandemic. You want to teach them to wash their hands, you should be doing that regardless. Kids can be gross, and there are germs and sicknesses in the world other than COVID-19. It doesn't need to be about the pandemic at all. You don't need to teach my child about wearing masks or vaccines. Leave that to the child's guardian. School is not the time or place for testing or vaccinations, regardless of any circumstance, especially considering there are plenty of free testing sites in our community. I feel our biggest concern here, aside from health and safety, is mental health. Suicide rates in children have increased significantly. Our children need stability and routine. They need the chance to build relationships with their friends and teachers. This health and safety plan is not going to give our children that. The school is the gateway to much more than education for most children. It gives many children access to educational help, therapies, counseling, food, and much more. For the 2021 school year, Indiana School District received $3.5 million in ARP and ESSER funding. How much does the school district plan to receive by continuing a health and safety plan for the 2122 school year? In conclusion, I would like to see Indiana School District return to normal. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Is Jamie Okapal on the call, please?
I am on the call, and I'd be happy to restate what I commented on in the previous section, if you'd like, or if you just want to refer to that previous comment, that's fine as well, just let me know.
It's, you know, this is public comment, you get three minutes. Go ahead and, and, you know, with, with your comments, as long as you can hold them within three minutes.
That's fine, it's just restating what I stated in the previous meeting. My comment is addressing two main areas of concern regarding the proposed health and safety plan. However, however, my concerns are not limited to the content that I'll have time to discuss tonight. Before I start, I'd like to remind parents who are watching that submission of the ARP SIR health and safety plan by the school district is indeed voluntary and optional, but is required in exchange for additional government allocated funds to the school district. The first point is regarding the recommendation for the masking of children who are not vaccinated under the age of 12 or at high risk, excuse me, who are not vaccinated under the age of 12 or at high risk, as stated in the health and safety plan. For a myriad of reasons that I'd be happy to discuss in more detail another time, masking for any child should no longer be required during the school year unless they choose to do so. Creating a visible environment of those who have and have not, for whatever reason, opens the door to medical discrimination, potential bullying, isolation, and additional emotional health, emotional and health concerns. As I stated previously, my son last year had many times where he was in the nurse's office due to headaches and not feeling well secondary to wearing a mask in a non-air-conditioned building with poor ventilation. The second issue in the court is the quarantine protocol. Not only does it fail to address the implications and benefits of benefits of natural antibody immunity, but it also falls short of a realistic ability to provide acceptable educational requirements for students on quarantine. Theoretically, students could face more than one quarantine throughout the school year, reaching 20 or more days out of school. Targeting those who are not vaccinated regardless of age is educationally discriminatory in nature. I'd like to remind the school board that vaccination does not equate to immunity. Vaccinated people are still indeed acquiring COVID despite the lack of willingness by governing agencies to readily share this information. Additionally, I would like to add that the vaccine does not come without risk, and you can simply research the VAERS report that is updated every Friday. Currently, there are over 7,000 deaths reported in relation to the vaccine and over, and several hundred thousand incidents of adverse events. I would like to see further discussion and clarification around both of these topics, along with details and outline logistical plans for implementation. As someone who has been in the healthcare field for over 25 years, I want to see children and staff return to school with a common sense approach health plan, one that is not based on scientifically unfounded extremes and exclusionary principles, regardless of the governing bodies making the recommendations. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Jamie, thank you. Jamie Boyer, are you on the call this evening? Jamie Boyer, can you unmute your microphone for us, please? One more time, Jamie Boyer, are you there? Nothing heard. Arwin Bressler, are you on the? Basler, are you on the call, please? Arwin Basler, one more time?
Jamie Boyer's here.
Jamie Boyer, go ahead.
All right. I know that last year, the last year and a half has been challenging and something we have never had to deal with before. We all understood that the lockdowns were necessary in the beginning, and until we as a country were able to gather more information on the coronavirus. Starting school in 2020 was a challenge, and I was willing to subject my children to going to school in person as much as possible, even though I felt like some of the guidelines that we're going to have to follow were a little excessive. But 2021 is different. As I look around, life in Indiana County is effectively back to normal. Masking has been reduced, people are out in enclosed spaces in the public, and the numbers are decreasing significantly. The vaccine is now available for anyone who decides that that is right for them and their family. However, these vaccines are still experimental, and the potential long-term effects from it may not be known about it for years. My problem with the proposed coronavirus guidelines for the upcoming school year is that they seem to be set up to reward those who choose the vaccine and punish those who do not. My family and I have chosen not to receive the vaccine, mostly because we've already been exposed to coronavirus and now have natural immunity. Currently, there is no scientific study out there that says my children are at any significant risk of getting reinfected with COVID-19 again. You were proposing that if my children are at school and are close to someone who tests positive, they will have to quarantine for 10 days, even if they do not have symptoms and after they've already developed natural immunity. First of all, the testing is not FDA approved, and in our opinion, should not be done at school. Secondly, the science has even shown that lockdowns and quarantines have had little to no effect on transmission rates. This is medical discrimination, and will be setting our students and teachers up for another extremely stressful school year. How will this not violate my children's rights? Quarantining them will allow other students to have access to their private health information without our permission. This will open up potential bullying issues for those who choose not to be vaccinated, which seems to be in direct contrast with the school district who has been so vocally anti-bullying. My wife and I do not agree that the school board should be educating our children on why they should receive the coronavirus vaccine. Will any of the education include the fact that it's still experimental, and there are potential significant side effects that may be more detrimental to their health than an actual COVID-19 infection? Our schools should not be coordinated with vaccine clinics. The information that our parents and students receive should come from qualified healthcare providers, and the final choice be made by their parents or guardians. We also feel that it looks bad when the school is adopting a program based on receiving funding from the government by opting into their program. My wife and I are not anti-vax, but we stand for medical freedom. We choose to take care of our bodies by supporting our own immune systems. We will not be participating in the vaccine program. We should not be punished and discriminated against in order to receive government funding through the ARP ESSER Act. The pandemic pandemic is effectively over. If you are pro-vaccine, you've had the opportunity to receive it by now. Everyone else who chooses not to know what the risks are and are know what the risks are, we're willing to accept. It's time to return to a normal school year without punishing those who know the risks and choose to accept it.
Jamie, your three minutes. Your three minutes is up, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Lisa Price, if you would, please come with your comments. Yeah, I think that'd be better.
All right, I'm Lisa Price. I am wearing the hat of a parent with two children who are under the age of 12. I'm also a professor at IUP, and I teach courses in research methods and design and know how to interpret research scientific evidence. I'm asking that we continue, at least for the beginning of the school year this fall, to require students to wear masks, especially because we know that all students are planning to, we're planning to have all students in the building, so therefore, social distancing is less possible. The reason that that Indiana School District was so successful last year in our school year was partly due to the fact that we did have children masking, and that contributed to the success of in-person instruction for that school year. We know that wearing masks is, has been shown to be effective as a way to reduce transmission. Children represent, at this point, 14% of all COVID-19 cases in the United States. We, they do not appear to suffer severe disease at the rates that adults do. However, hospitalization in the 12 to 17-year-old population is increasing. Some children are experiencing long COVID. Data from Italy and the United Kingdom, especially more recently with the Delta variant proliferating there, are showing that more than half of the children 6 to 16 who have the virus are experiencing some effects of long COVID. They are also, some go on to experience multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children. The key point, I think, that has to be mentioned is that we know nothing about the future long-term effects of our children having COVID. We don't know the effects of adults having COVID, but, but children are obviously going to live a lot longer than we do. And therefore, the consequences of long COVID or ramifications of COVID long, long term are more important to consider for them. Currently, we are flipping from the Alpha variant being the predominant variant to the Delta variant being the predominant variant. It is 60% more transmission transmissible than the Alpha variant. There's concern that it may cause more severe disease with hospitalization up to double that of the previous variant. The Delta variant is proliferating now at the end of the two-week period ending May 22, the Delta variant was 3.1% of COVID cases. Two weeks later, it was 10%. Two weeks later, it was 30%. Two weeks later, as of July 3, it was 51.7%. And it's predominating mostly in areas where vaccination rates are low. Right now, vaccination rates are 37.7% in Indiana County, which is not sufficient to protect our children or the rest of us. Despite the range of claims that masks are harmful to children, the science is consistently showing that those are myths or based on faulty science. There's been misinformation on social media that appears convincing. However, when you analyze the research that they're referring to, the studies are conducted at a low level of scientific rigor, and the health risks of vaccination are probably less than the health risk of getting COVID.
Thank you, thank you for accepting the, the three-minute requirement there. That is very much appreciated. Betsy? Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I come as a mother of a soon-to-be third grader at Ben Franklin. I was, I was, I was aware tonight that the arts camp that my daughter will be going to with the Arts Council had met with you all today, and I really, I really thank you because the post that we, that just happened in the last half an hour tells us that those who are participating in the Arts Council camp will be wearing their masks. So thank you for that, and I appreciate that. I learned tonight that you are following the Pennsylvania Department of Health recommendations, and they had a post on July 9. They are analyzing the most recent update from the CDC. And in the CDC update, they do say for children in, in K through 12, K through six, and then maybe even farther, to still wear masks when they're indoors. I'd like to encourage you to, to consider that in, in, in this, in this policy. My daughter will be wearing her mask when she goes back. I'm wearing my mask. I'm vaccinated. You are new to me. I don't know if you're not vaccinated. But there we go. Thank you. But that's the, and this is, this is just who I am, and this is the expectation I have of my daughter until she gets vaccinated. And I know there are many of us out there thinking the same thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. One more time for Erwin Bressler. She should be here. Okay. Okay. Basler, okay. Is she, is she, are you online? One more time, Dr. Basler, are you online? Nothing heard. Okay, that concludes our public comment. IAE, ASME, SGA, or STUKA, anybody from those organizations? Okay, nothing heard. Mike, it looks like we're down to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. For those who were here with us earlier, we had a great conversation on the benefit of dual enrollment in college and high school programming. We heard from Deputy Secretary Tanya Garcia, as well as some other guests, esteemed guests from IUP and Westmoreland Community College. And as you know, I think this is a step in the right direction for us as a district to offer these opportunities for our kids. When we talk about eliminating barriers and providing hope and opportunity, this is a great example of that. So I'm excited to see the work that that's going to continue here as a board, as well as an academic committee meeting, to make this available to our students. I appreciate the leadership of Mr. Zohorcheck, Mr. Rob Heinrich, and Mr. McLean, making this possible for our kids. They're going above and beyond to help make sure we have a plan in place, and we are excited to bring those, those things forward as we progress here in the upcoming weeks and or months. And lastly, just a point of clarification, I think it's important for the public to understand, no matter what decision you make tonight regarding the health and safety plan, a point of clarity needs to be addressed from my perspective as a superintendent. I'm going to use this opportunity to do such. In no way, shape, or form does this district issue any sort of quarantines. That information is decided upon the Department of Health. What our nurses do is contact the Department of Health, present them with the facts, and Department of Health make determination they think is best. And I can't judge them, say they're right or wrong, that's not my role. What I can do and will do is protect and defend our nurses who go above and beyond to make sure they follow the code, the code and the regulations that we're forced to apply here in our school district. So when we say comments like we're quarantining students, or the school district is doing something wrong with regards to quarantine, it's not our decision. And I think that's important for people to know that, albeit we may agree or not agree with the procedures Department of Health takes, but that's not our control. What is in our control is we have to comply. When the Department of Health tells us a student has to be quarantined, they make that decision, not the district. And I think that's important to clarify, Mr. President, because I understand and appreciate the, the confusion and or concern that parents bring forward. We don't want to mitigate or excuse that, and we welcome those conversations because we want to hear from our parents, but I can't sit here and let those nurses here in the district, or the administration, or the teachers take blame for it, because that's not where it's rightly placed. Any concerns with the quarantine process should be directed to Department of Health, not the Indiana Area School District. And I don't mean that to be curt, or disingenuous, or insensitive to the people here tonight or on the call, but we have to be clear and make sure that we understand that unfortunately, the ugliness of this pandemic has put schools in the middle of everything. And that's where it's terrible, and that's where I'm sadly disappointed in everything, because the schools didn't ask for this position, the schools didn't ask to be able to enforce or follow the edicts of Department of Health, but we have an obligation when they issue a quarantine, that that's out of our hands, and we're going to follow through. But I don't want anyone in this call or in this room to think or believe that our nurses, our administrators, or teachers are arbitrarily picking who gets placed in quarantine, because that's not simply the truth. So with that said, Mr. President, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Is Mr. Ray Pack on the call yet tonight?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, and it's the listeners' report time.
Thank you, Mr. President. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them from the Board of School Directors as well. I know there were some comments made in the public, and I think Mr. Vukovich handled those appropriately, just, you know, where the authority comes and what guidance is being issued from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. There was a comment I do want to, to address, at least on the SIR funding. All the SIR funding is linked to is that we have to have a health and safety plan update. That is it. It doesn't necessarily tell us what we have to do, it just simply says we have to have it in order to receive them. So for that reasoning, I just, I wanted to be clear on that as well, that it doesn't necessarily say do this or do this. It says we have to have that passed before July 31, which is what the Board is, is doing. One thing I do want to, to bring up to the Board of School Directors, there's been a few legislative acts recently, we're aware of Act 66 that came out as it relates to retention, but I actually want to talk about Act 65 of 2021, and this is an update to the Sunshine Law. This actually goes into effect on August 29, and it's going to be a revamp, and one that I'm not sure that will have much effect on Indiana Area School District. I think we do a really nice job of getting the agenda out, making sure that there are copies available, and so on and so forth. But I did want to post some highlights. Act 65 requires that we post the agenda on the website no later than 24 hours in advance. We post the agenda at the locate, at the location of the meeting. We post the agenda at the principal office location of the agency, and we make copies available to those in attendance. Those are, again, things that we already do. Some of the major changes is an agency may not take official action on business that is not on the agenda unless, and here's kind of the, the quick caveats, the business relates to an emergency involving a clear and present danger to life or property. The business arises 24 hours before the meeting, and the nature is de minimis and does not involve an expenditure of funds or entering into a contract. And those rules apply in the same capacity that, for instance, if a resident or taxpayer brings up a matter at a meeting, that would not be able to be acted upon by the Board of School Directors unless it is de minimis or does not involve an expenditure of funds or entering into a contract. Again, that's a significant change to what we're able to do currently. What we would have to do is have a special meeting, or we would have to take action at a later time at our, our later meeting. For instance, if we had something come up in August, we would have to wait till September. So I did want to bring that to the Board of School Directors, that is a significant change to the Sunshine Law. We hope that we're going to be able to, to continue to move forward, but it may create some inefficiencies if something does come up last second, and it does create an expenditure of funds or entering into a contract, again, we wouldn't be able to take action until the next meeting. With that being said, Mr. President, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that, that was all for my update. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Any questions from the board? Nothing heard. There are no presentations for this evening. We have the item three, approval of minutes and agenda. May I have a motion, please? Okay, moved in second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Board reports, Indiana County Technology Center. Uta, what's going on up there?
The ICTC will meet in two weeks, so I have no report.
Okay. Barb, Erin, what's happening over there?
We haven't had a meeting since my last report, but I am happy to announce that Dr. Bridget Matson is the new director over there. And so, so if you need any help, that's who to refer to. Jim Wagner is now officially retired and out the door, and Dr. Matson would love to be invited to one of our meetings in the future, so.
Well, if, if you would, please extend an invitation to her and ask her to coordinate with Mr. Vukovich on scheduling a time. Okay. All right, Tom, looks like Academic and Extracurricular Committee.
Thank you, Walter. We had a, a meeting, a presentation tonight on, on dual enrollment and AP. Mike, would you collaborate on that, please? That's, that's what we're supposed to be doing.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Harley. Tonight, we had some special guests from the Commonwealth, Deputy Secretary Garcia, as well as Dr. McCarthy from IUP, and Dr. Sidney Reeler from Westmoreland Community College, and Jen Echols from Westmoreland Community College. And what we had a discussion on was how we increase awareness, access, and opportunities in the area of dual enrollment here at the Indiana Area School District. We're going to take an aggressive approach to increasing the amount of offerings in the overcoming, in the next couple of months and or weeks. And we set out some short-term goals, but I think the most important part during the conversation, Mr. Harley, was not in addition to hope, opportunity, awareness, and access, was the idea that there's a world where both AP and dual enrollment exists, and dual enrollment offers a tremendous value and benefit to all students. And if we're going to be serious about offering those college opportunities to our students, we want to increase number of offerings and program of opportunities, which we're going to do so, and again, next several weeks and or months, sir.
And when you say next several weeks and months, by, by the 1st of August, when the councils come back, we'll have a program in place. I was speaking with Wade about some of the technical problems that they have to overcome, but I can't tell you how excited I am to see this fleshed out.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Tom, you've got some motions, I believe, tonight?
Yes, I'll take 52, 53, 54, and 56 and 57 at once. There's no objection. I move that 52, 53, 54, 56, and 57 be approved as issued to the board.
Okay, moved in second. Comments, questions, or discussions from the board? Mike, maybe you want to talk about the affiliation agreements very quickly?
Yes, sir, those are affiliation agreements with IUP and the University of Pittsburgh at Johnstown, allows student teachers and pre-student teachers to come in our building and complete some of their hours. It's standard operating procedure, and we do them every so often, and it's just good practice to get a new one in place, sir.
Okay, anything else from the board? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Tom.
58, 2021, 2022 Health and Safety Plan, based on the recommendation of the committee, the 2021, 2022 Health and Safety Plan be approved as submitted.
Okay, moved in second. Do we have questions, comments, or discussions on the Health and Safety Plan? Go ahead, Cinda.
Based on the discussion at the committee and the general feeling that I feel in the public, I'd like to propose a friendly amendment to this motion, that we accept the Health and Safety Plan with the stipulation that the section on masking be edited to say that the wearing of masks be required for all persons at all times when inside the district buildings. I understand there would be an exception for those students who physically can't wear a mask, but just in general, make masks required.
Okay, so is a friendly amendment, it takes the consent then of the people who made the motion and or seconded it, if, depending on how the flow. So, Tom, if you accept it, it's fine. If not, Cinda, then you can make it a formal motion.
I'd rather that be a formal motion, please.
Okay, so you're going to turn yours into a formal amendment? Okay, I need a second for that formal amendment. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So to be very, very clear with the board, we're talking about adding Cinda's request, and we're going to vote on that, whether or not to amend the motion to include the revision on the mask. If that passes, then that's how the motion will read, and we'll then vote on the motion to approve the plan. If it fails, then the motion will stay the same as what it was printed, and then we will vote on, on that motion as it was submitted. Okay? So does everybody understands how the, how the vote will flow here? Do we have questions, comments, or discussion on the amendment? Go ahead, Joel. We're voting on whether or not to amend the approval of it based on changing the masking requirement.
It's my understanding that this agreement could be amended at any time.
Correct.
So that plan could be approved as is tonight, and if we find that the variant starts to get worse, or that there's a severe problem in our local jurisdiction, that we could, we could even have a special meeting to amend at that point.
That's correct.
Okay, additional questions, comments, or discussion on the amendment?
Would you repeat the amendment? And was it, was the amendment, I'm sorry, was the amendment proposed and seconded?
Yes, yes, it was, it was seconded. I have, do you have the proposed amendment there?
What I wrote down for the amendment was
What I wrote down for the amendment was that, based on the recommendation of the committee, the 2021, 22 Health and Safety Plan be approved as submitted with the stipulation that the section for masks be edited to require masks in all district buildings.
That the understanding of the people that moved in seconded the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Your clarification?
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
This, this Health and Safety Plan has been proposed and worked on for a bit, and I fully expect it to be amended several times between now and the fall. I think what we're doing right now with this amendment is is projecting a worst-case scenario forward, and I'd really rather not do that today. I can go to a baseball game. I can go to an indoor thing without a mask, without a, without a vaccination. And I think we're being premature to to put this in. I think if, I think if the, if the infection rates show up, that, that, and, and, and the PDE or Department of Health comes out with a clear standard, I think then we make that reaction. But we, we, I think, I think this is, this is, we're anticipating a problem that hasn't shown up yet.
Okay, Tom. Yes, it, go ahead, please.
As we have made changes to the Athletic and Extracurricular Health and Safety Plan over the past year, we have followed the guidance issued by the CDC. And currently, the guidance issued by the CDC is that masking is recommended, and especially recommended for children 12 years and younger who are not able to be vaccinated. And it's based on that recommendation that the conversation that we had suggested that we amend this motion to make masks required within our school buildings. In addition, that also is the policy at IUP, which is just down the road from us. And that's kind of the history as to, at least, I'm trying to summarize, the purpose of this amendment to the motion that was on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. I got an echo here. Is, is there anybody else questioned, comment, or discussion on the amendment?
And I think it could be a problem in the county, but I tend to agree with Mr. Harley that the plan can be amended just upon proper notice, or a special meeting. And it seems right now we don't have a serious problem yet. That's not to say that there won't be. So I feel as though we have a good plan for right now. Let's see what happens. So I'm willing to support the original draft agreement at this point, but that's not to say I would make a motion later if I felt like.
Okay, any, anybody else?
I have stated through this whole pandemic that I am not a medical expert. And I, although I have read some research, I feel comfortable with taking guidance from the CDC at this point in time. This is a changing situation. It has been changing constantly. And I just feel that I can't make a decision that violates the CDC recommendations.
Cindy, did you have something else?
No, I just wanted to say the whole way through this, the whole way through the pandemic, we've always said that we're going to err on the side of caution. We're always going to think about safety first. And I don't consider this to be reacting in haste or anything. I consider this preparing for the worst, hoping for the best. Things can always change. If we make the requirements now, let people know what is expected. If things change, things can always get easier. But at this point, we, we have everybody ready to know what to expect and to know that we are very seriously trying to make sure that everybody is safe.
Go ahead, Tom.
Academically, we're not doing synchronous. We're doing, we're going to do as best we can. We're not doing cohorts. We're planning on coming back five days a week. If we have to go to synchronous, if we have to go to cohorts, that's going to change our safety plan. And that's when we change, that's when we should change the safety plan. If we're worried about worst-case scenarios, then we need to go back to what we did in 2020 in the fall academically. And I don't think we can afford to do that. I'm talking about educational-wise. So that's, thank you.
Okay, Tom, thanks. Anybody else again? If, if the board is through, then I'll weigh in myself. I do not believe I'm going to support this particular amendment. And the reason, there are several reasons why. Number one, I believe Cindy pointed out in the committee meeting that there's, we changed it how many times in the, throughout the course of last year that our plans changed because of different guidance. And this board has done an excellent job in responding to those changes. And I think there are a number of people out there that, that are weary of, of the masking requirement. I think that we see most of our other surrounding school districts have also not made it a requirement. And so I don't believe that it's in the best interest of our students at this point in time to make that as a requirement. I do agree with Julia, absolutely. If things change, we need to make those changes in the plan. I have full confidence that this board will make the right choices at the right time. I just think this is the wrong time to make a mandatory mask requirement. Any last comments by the board members before I call for the question? Yeah, Terry, go
Thanks, Walter. Yeah, we all realize this is a sensitive and hot topic. I think all of us have done research, listened to experts. I, my feeling is, I think whatever your position is, you can find data that supports it. So I guess I, I look at more at real life and real situations. And the one statistic that stands out to me is that 99.997% of how it affects younger people, I guess, stands out to me. That seems to be the one statistic that, that maybe both sides of this problem maybe have an agreement on. So I'm not going to support the change.
Okay.
I do agree, though, that, like we've done in the past, that as more information comes out, you know, no matter what's decided tonight, there's going to be revisions done to this plan. I'll agree to that.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll call the question, and I'll ask Jared to do a roll call, please.
Barb Barker. Tammy Blank. Cindy Broad. Julia Tomarki-Cucuro. Tom Harley. Mr. Kerr. Mrs. Leeper. Mrs. Lowry. Mr. Schroth. Amendment passes five to four.
Okay, so now the, would you read the motion, Jared, the amended motion, so that we all are fresh on what we're going to vote for next?
Yes, sir. Based on the recommendation of the committee, the 2021, 22 Health and Safety Plan be approved as submitted with the stipulation that the section for masks be edited to require masks in all district buildings.
Okay, that's the motion that is currently on the table. Is there any further discussion at this point in time? Nothing heard from the board. We'll again do a roll call on whether to approve the amended motion, please. I'm sorry, go, go ahead, Tom. Thanks, Tom. Anybody else?
Walter, do you need a second on that motion?
No, 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 no. The, the, okay, the parliamentary rules are, the motion was made, and it was seconded. And then there was a formal motion, second, and vote on the amendment. So that just changed the motion on the floor. We don't need to go through, through the next process. The only thing we have left to do is any further discussion or take a vote. Not hearing anything. Roll call vote, Ms.
Tammy Blank. Cindy Broad. Julia Tomarki-Cucuro. Tom Harley. Mr. Kerr. Mrs. Leeper. Mrs. Lowry. Mr. Schroth.
No.
Barb Barker. Motion passes five to four.
Okay. Uta, policy and personnel. I think we have a couple of important items tonight.
I did not have a committee meeting report because we did not meet. We'll have to, we'll have to do them individually. 6.2 Act 93 agreement that the board approves the addition of the Assistant Supervisor of Building and Grounds position to the Act 93 agreement with the attached job description.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Vugovic, is there anything you'd like to add or comment there? I'm sorry, who seconded that? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next one.
6.3 Employment of Assistant Buildings and Grounds Supervisor. Based on the recommendation of administration, the board approves the employment of David Bright as the Assistant Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds at an annual salary of $60,000, pending receipt of updated clearances and clear Act 168 forms.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments? Yes.
B R I G H T. David Bright, yes.
Okay. Further discussion, questions, or comments? All those in favor of accepting Mr. David Wright, please say aye. Bright, I said bright. At least I think I said bright. Right, I said bright. Okay, go ahead. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next one.
6.4 Employment of Professional Personnel. Based on the recommendation of administration, Angela Frontino, F R O N T I N O, be employed as a learning support teacher effective August 23, 2021, in accordance with their certification at an annual salary of $55,237, Step 2 Instructional 1, pending receipt of updated clearances and clear Act 168 forms.
Okay, moved in second.
Is it step two or step one?
Step two.
The agenda says step one.
I know, that's why I read step two.
Okay, questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor of approving Angela Frontino, please say aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're at 6.5.
Athletic Director Contract. The board approves the agreement with Mr. Gregory Lozanik as Athletic Director for the 2021, 2022 school year as presented.
Okay, questions or comments on renewing Mr. Lozanik? I do want to make one comment. I do want to thank Greg very sincerely for all of his work throughout this past year in dealing with the Health and Safety Plan. I know Uta, Cindy, Wade, and Rob are all part of that. And the reports I'm getting is that he really stepped up, and, and he's to be applauded for his, his, his work and efforts in, in this, this past year. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Sure.
I just want to welcome Mr. Bright, Ms. Frontino, and Mr. Lozanik back either to our district or back to our district as in place.
Very good, very good, Uta. Thank you. Okay, Terry, Buildings and Grounds.
Nothing under number seven tonight.
Okay, Julia, number eight.
We did not have a meeting tonight, but we will have a meeting the end of August. That's our next meeting. If something comes up, of course, we can speak to them. So we have two motions tonight. I'd like to take them separately. So I move a point two that based on the recommendation of the administration, the current bills, be approved as submitted. Second.
Moved in second.
Jared, I have a question. You can tell you're with the ICTC, so that's, is that our final bill? Is that the first bill from the chair?
Did receive our first bill, so I believe that is our first bill. We received it kind of at the end of June after they passed their budget, but we didn't pay it till after July 1.
Okay, any other comments or questions on the bills? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. 8.3.
I move that the board approves the donation of approximately 125 to 150 feet cut field stones 24 inches wide and 18 inches tall from Nathan Kovalchik for the Ben Franklin Outdoor Classroom Project. I'd just like to say that I saw those, and I saw those, and they're absolutely beautiful stones. And, and what they, what they've donated to the district, I think is just a tremendous value. I really appreciate it.
Very good. Cindy, go ahead.
I didn't even understand. I didn't even have the idea how long they're, the 24 or 18, or they?
Some of them are long. They're nice. But somebody can split them down.
This is not a minor donation.
This is not a minor donation.
No, this is, this is $100 a stone. These are, these are the stones that came out of the river.
They're beautiful. And I know that we've been working hard on this outdoor project, classroom project, and I believe you've had some fundraising volunteers as well. I think it was Mr. Ron Harhur who's interested in helping. He's a former member of the board, so we've got some tremendous commitment. It's exciting.
Do you have a question for clarification?
I do, brothers. This is supposed to be Nathan Kovalchik, K O V A L T H I K. Is this a correct spell? Because I know that you have the Kovalchik Convention Athletic Conference for it. K O V A L T H I K. So is this a correct or do I need a correct spell?
Correct spelling is what you just said.
You need to correct.
Okay, all, any further questions, comments, or discussion on the donation? Not your, not, not your committee, Uta. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, looks like we're down to the closing section. We do not have any discussion items. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Okay, go ahead. Do we have some, some order there, Rob? Yeah, but I don't have a screen in front of me. Okay, Jamie, call, go ahead with your comment, please.
Hi, my comment is in regard to the Health and Safety Plan, the amendment, and I just wanted to ask why there was not a survey sent to the family members and parents of the community, as there were, for many other issues that we faced last year. So is that something that is not deemed necessary in this regard?
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, Mike? On the... Okay, any comments from the public in the room? Nothing seen or heard. We had some closers this evening. We also had an executive session. Ron, would you want to comment on our executive session, please?
Yeah, another problem, Mr. President. Mr. Vugovic talked about earlier, we talked about the personnel items on the agenda, the updates to the hirings. We also had a legal update to the Copper Beach and Campus Crest tax appeal that I gave an update to the board on as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Our next board meeting will be, I think it's a regular meeting on August the 9th, 2021, for discuss general purposes. We have Buildings, Grounds, Transportation, and Academic on July the 19th, Academic on August the 2nd, and Policy and Personnel on August the 9th, all at 5:30. Go ahead, Mike. Yeah, go ahead with the comments. Yeah, three minutes, please. Deanna, who? Deanna Gray, please go with your comment.
Hi, I'm a parent of a seventh grader and a third grader. I don't have anything prepared, but I agree with Jamie. You know, we were surveyed all last year on multiple items. There was, you know, many emails sent, like, to discuss what was going to be happening, and I feel like this was a rushed decision tonight on that amendment. And I feel like parents should have had some input to know that this was going to be changed in this, in this matter. You know, I feel like it was kind of rushed. I, I was happy with that it would be optional. I feel like if parents are scared, then go ahead and mask your child. But for those of us who are against masking for health concerns and health reasons, and just because, I mean, we don't know the long-term effects of wearing these masks emotionally, health-wise. I just feel like there should have been more consideration and parent input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who's next, Rob? Katie Harbosky, please.
Hi, guys. I just wanted to reiterate what the other two said. I, we did get a lot of surveys the past year, and had a chance to put our input in, and I know some of us got a chance during public comments, but that's not everybody's opinion, and the school board members don't always get a chance to hear everybody's opinion. So I feel like asking the parents and seeing how many kids are going to return to school with the current guidelines versus if you had kept masks optional, is that going to change how you do synchronous versus asynchronous learning? I feel like that wasn't considered, and I agree with Deanna about the rushed decision, and I don't think that was taken into effect when that decision was made. So I know there's time for it to change between now and when school gets back into session, but I don't think all options were considered, and I do think that parents need to be asked their opinion and what they plan to do for the fall. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rob, who's next? Christina Boyer, go ahead, please.
Hi, yes, I'm a mom of three young ladies in our district, and I agree, I think there should be a survey sent. The school board did an amazing job last year of surveying us and getting our opinions as parents, and I think that's really important to get the pulse of how your parents and students are feeling about the current year. And I think that, you know, we should be looking at the districts around us where many districts have made masking optional, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Christine Peake, please come with your comments now, please. You're going to have to unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm actually a parent of someone who's going to be going into kindergarten, and I just wanted to say that the, the information that was provided is CDC recommendations, and that's why you're saying that you're changing it. But the CDC recommendation is that masks are recommended, not required. So I feel that if they're recommending masks, then the school board should also either recommend or make optional. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there one more? Shannon, please come with your comments now.
Hi, I'm the mom of two boys, one in the high school and one in the junior high, and I also just want to reiterate the need for a survey. I agree that, I think the school district did a great job of surveying us throughout the last school year to get a pulse for how everybody was feeling and how they thought their education should proceed when we were navigating, you know, very uncertain times. And this absolutely is an item that needs surveyed. I, there's many parents that, that aren't on these meetings, and, and you need to hear the voice of everybody, because I agree, as the CDC recommends masking, that is not a mandate. We are all walking around with no masks on. This seems very, like a very early decision at a time that it, it doesn't need made. As you said, things can change. Well, then it's easy to, to change this if things, you know, go in a different direction, but right now, we're coming out of this, and we have school districts all around us who have already decided to return to school in the fall with no masks. So I definitely think this needs further consideration, and a parent survey would help that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank everyone for their public comment. Go ahead, Josie.
Obviously, this is an issue fraught with political decision-making. It's unfortunate that it has come to this. Perhaps a survey is necessary, but I just looked at the CDC, should children 2 and older until 12 should wear masks? Should. That's not requiring, but they're saying they should. They're not forcing them to. The situation in Indiana County is such that we had a medical doctor speak here tonight saying that she has seen COVID in this county, she has treated, and she knows that the Delta variant is coming. So I think that cooler heads need to prevail. The superintendent needs to look at, he spoke very eloquently tonight as to other issues. I think that we need to give him time to regroup. I think that it was good that the amendment passed tonight. It's obvious that it can be reversed if we continue with our lack of infection rate, but again, we only have vaccine rate at 37%. So that is something that is still going to be in our community. It has not gone away. We had a medical professional here tonight sharing that information with us. So I think that it's always better to be safe than sorry.
Okay, I see where somebody else has raised their hand. However, the way this works in the comment section afterwards, if you, once you've already spoken, you only get one shot, and I understand that person has already, has already spoken. At this point in time, no other public comment in the, in the room here. I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Moved in second, all those in favor, say aye. Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.